All right, let's call the meeting to a halt. I'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Protam, please call a roll.
Morevka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Dr. March.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Yep.
Mr. Ham.
Here.
And Ms. Bowden, sir. Okay, in your packet was the minutes from the July 8 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to that? If not, entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
Second it.
Moved by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Morevka. Jones.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Dr. March.
Present.
And, yes. And next, you have the accounts payable and payroll in your packet. Payroll for pay period ending 6/29, $19,050,361.25. Accounts payable, general fund, $66,183.21, and a motor fuel tax fund, $20,024.17, for a total of $86,207.22. Are there any questions on any other bills? If not, a motion to approve those bills.
Motion.
Second. It's been moved by Trustee Ham, seconded by Trustee Parker. Ham.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
Dr. March.
Yes.
And Bowden, don't you yes. And next on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have anything to say? Okay. Next we go to reports of committees. Village Administrator.
I'll just defer to any questions if anybody has any questions on my written report.
And Police Chief Report.
The only thing I passed out, some flyers will be going around the community. August 6 is National Night Out, which is a national program involving police in the community. So four agencies in low county of the Forest Reserve, Moni Creek, and ourselves are going to be at the Moni Reservoir. And we have a bunch of activities planned from 5 till 7:30. Food out there and fishing for the kids. And we're hoping, like I said, we're hoping it'll be comfortable like tonight. So we invite all to attend. So, thank you.
Any other support?
There were one spot on Rathie Road near the school where there was holding some water. I know the contractor did address that to make that water get to the creek and they put some road control blanket. So that issue hopefully is complete. We'll make double check next time it rains heavily. On Route 50 in Corning, they're moving along. As long as we can keep the contractor moving, hopefully we can have the disturbing activities done in the next two to three weeks and then just work on signage and striping and getting the signals turned on. And the reservicing, the local reserving and patching job that should start next week.
When do you think they'll remove that cell fence over the Oak Street, Rathie Road?
They should be able to do it because I believe all the growth is far enough along. So I actually thought they were going to do it last week, but they might be double checking on it, making sure with Will South Cook who reviews the road control to make sure it's good to take down. Should be soon.
Maybe you've got the answer to this, Amy. Who actually owns that land from the last house on Oak Street up to Rathie Road?
Near the storage area for the creek. I believe the school donated to the village.
So the village owns it?
Pretty sure, yes.
Could you give back to us for sure so we know who?
Yeah, that's what I remember. So I'll double check, yeah.
Did you want to comment at all about what's going on with the school, the junior high? There was some issue about the drainage and going into the pond and we put a stop order on it and just want to comment on that.
The junior high was working on a storm sewer project and the village wanted to make sure that whatever stormwater they were picking up from their roof and their parking lot was going to the Park District Pond from their new storm sewer. But the village wanted to make sure it was reviewed in order to make sure that it didn't have an adverse effect on the pond or to make sure the pond had enough capacity, which is hard to do because it's an older pond without any engineering calculations that are done. So we worked with their engineer and tried to come up with, well, their engineer came up with a solution to put in additional pond for the school, which we reviewed and thought that it was sufficient in order to not create any problems with what they were doing.
So where's this new pond going to come?
I don't know if it's official. I know the last plan I saw was a small pond right in front of the junior high by Garfield.
So like by the ball field?
It might be like right by the football field between?
Just to the east of the football field.
Really, that'd be really small.
It's not, yeah, it's not a large pond. It'd be a small, and it wouldn't be a pond that's constantly filled with water. It'd only be during rain, during events.
It would have to be tremendously small pond because east of the football field from that fence to the sidewalk is pretty narrow strip.
Yeah, it'd be a dry bottom. It won't be an actual pond, so it'll be a detention area, basically. So just to kind of clarify a little bit too, we didn't put a stop order on their construction. We just, we let them continue their construction because they had some other work they were doing. We just stopped them from continuing on with their current design where their, with the water that would come off of, partially off of part of the roof and the parking lot there at the junior high would flow directly into the pond. That design, we felt like was a bit of a risk without any calculations to review. So we just asked them to kind of pull back on that, let us, give us something to review. We just couldn't sign off on that and construction had begun. So we asked them to kind of pull back on that and let us take a look at it. That pond at Division Street was designed for the subdivision that was there and we felt like this was kind of a new development and we wanted to make sure that whatever was coming off that pond could take that capacity. So we just wanted to work together with them co-operatively and make sure that we weren't putting undue burden on that pond that would affect the subdivision of the roads over there. So we said, go ahead and continue your construction. They were doing some water main work. Go ahead and finish and do that or continue to do that. Let us reevaluate the design of the stormwater portion of their project so that the village could feel comfortable that there would be no adverse effect on the stormwater management, of which we're responsible for.
Okay.
Superintendent wanted to thank us, the village, for extending the sidewalk on Garfield Street so the kids could stay on the sidewalk and not have to walk down on the street.
Hopefully they won't wreck our new sidewalk with all the construction.
Yeah.
All the bulldozers and cranes going through there. All right. Any other questions for the engineering? Okay. Next is, there was a treasurer's report and she also, everybody saw, she put in our packets kind of a three-month budget review. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that or if you have any questions on that. If we can forward those to Marcy if you have any questions. But this is, Tom Marcy would really appreciate it.
Absolutely, yes. Very well-done summary, I felt like. And I think it's a good spotlight on where we are currently with the budget and the actual one here today, so.
Yeah, we'd love to keep those coming.
Yeah, buy funding, so she'll keep those coming for you.
Okay. There is no old business, new business. Item A, Homewood Disposal Garbage Billing Transition, a discussion item.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some additional information on the garbage billing transition. I talked to you last time about the overall concept of us as a village, since our water and sewer. You know, we're no longer billing for water and sewer. That'd be probably more efficient for us to transition the garbage billing over to Homewood Disposal. We do have a contract with them. So as we were looking into the details of transitioning that billing, what we've come to find out is that on a monthly basis, the village pays Homewood Disposal upfront for that billing period. So, and then on a quarterly basis, the village would bill residents in arrears. So what that means is that this current bill that we just sent out in July to the residents was for the previous three months. So we, in order, and then Homewood Disposal, they want to pre-bill the customers, which makes sense. It makes total sense. So in order for that transition to take place for Homewood Disposal to be able to pre-bill, they would have to catch up and send a two-quarter bill in October. So that would mean a bill for two quarters would go out in October, billed by Homewood Disposal to the customers in order for them to get caught up, to be able to continue with pre-billing going forward. That hadn't been talked about when we talked to you guys and wanted to let you know that that would occur. That does take a lot of the collection issues out of, you know, off the table for Homewood Disposal going forward. That's how they bill all of their other customers. That's how they bill commercial, even in town now. So I just wanted you guys to be aware that that's how. We would send a letter out to the residents to let them know that's going to occur when the January bill would go out for the quarter, then it would be back to the 54th, make some change.
How do you think we should handle it?
I mean, I think just letting the customers know that it's been happened. I mean, I think pre-billing is a good policy. I think the village probably should have been doing it. But in the essence, we are the middleman. If we were paying Homewood Disposal, we were paying them, you know, on time, I guess you'd say, they would, we were paying them by the month.
So we were prepaying?
We were prepaying for the residents.
Right.
And so now that the billing will come directly from Homewood Disposal, then the residents will need to remove it. Yes, we will be removing ourselves kind of as the middleman and we won't be prepaying anymore. So the residents will need to catch up for one quarter. So it will be a bit of a transition. So they'll get one bill and it'll be about $108 for one bill.
And the bill will reflect, so they'll understand?
Well, I will send, I mean, immediately after this meeting, I will send a letter out to every customer telling them what will occur and explaining what's going to happen. We'll like to put that out in other media avenues, whether it be Facebook, the newspaper, so they know before October that this is what is happening.
For the people who are in arrears and then now with the double billing?
Right.
Who's going to bite the bullet on that? Us or Homewood? I mean?
Us, because we were the ones that prepaid. We've already paid Homewood Disposal for that. It's, the residents owe it to the village. They don't owe it to Homewood Disposal. So what we're going to be trying to look at as far as the village is, working with residents on payment plan, payment arrangements, trying to get them caught up prior to October. They, Homewood Disposal will work with us on not starting service if it comes to that. But we would like to, you know, get the customers who have an outstanding balance with the village, we'd like to get them caught up. Because they've continued to get service even though they've had an outstanding balance for however many quarters it's been, even though the village has prepaid that bill.
What's the quarterly amount?
It is like $54.17.
Like for the village?
Oh, about $20,000.
Any other comments on that? Item B, ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 50, Section 50.26 of the Code of Peotone in regard to billing for garbage/rubbish removal.
So this is just our ordinance on rubbish, allowing, it previously said that the village would bill for other services and we're just amending the code to say that now Homewood Disposal can actually bill.
Okay.
So it's just our code saying that where you previously approved their contract, amended their contract, saying that they would be billed, but this is our actual code.
So if people have any discussion, disagreement, questions, we're out of the loop. They need to call Homewood Disposal.
Right, right.
Any other questions or discussion about this?
I mean, we will, you know, work to help resolve any issue they have. I mean, we're still, you know, we contracted Homewood Disposal to do this work for us. So, I mean, I don't want to kind of step back and put my hands, although still, you know, if there's an issue, I'll still be there to assist, but, yes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Is there a second? Okay. So moved and seconded to approve the ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 50, Section 50.26 of the Code of Peotone in regard to billing for garbage/rubbish removal. It was moved by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Parker. Okay. Jones?
Yep.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Dr. March?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Next, another ordinance amending Title 15, Land Usages, Chapter 150 of the Building Regulations, Section 150.065, which is building permits of Peotone Village Code relative to building permit fees.
So we've reviewed our building department fees, our building code fees, so we've also run this through the building committee and they were in just in need of a review and an update and so we've increased them slightly. And we just need to put them into our building code. And that's where we are amending the code as such to insert these in there. And Tom is here also, if you have any question, any specific questions on that. These are also attached to SafeBuild's contract, but they need to be separate and also inserted into our building code.
Not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion.
A second.
It's been moved by Trustee Ham, seconded by Trustee Morevka to pass the ordinance amending Title 15, Land Usages, Chapter 150, Building Regulations, Section 150.065, Building Permits of the Peotone Village Code relative to building permit fees. Ham?
Yes.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Dr. March?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Next on the agenda, resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with SafeBuild Illinois LLC for certain services related to building department activities.
We haven't updated our contract with SafeBuild for some time, I think since 2013?
Three.
Three? Whoa!
In 2014, sorry. In 2014, we had a one cent per square foot increase in the permit fees or in our fees for new construction. All the remaining fees, fences, et cetera, haven't changed since 2003. That's again why we're updating the village's fees because they hadn't changed either. It's actually costing money to issue some permits. Costing us money, not them.
Yeah.
And then I got confused because our contract said independent consultants, LLC, and I'm like, well, who's that? So the whole contract, including fees, needed to be updated and reviewed, so we did that and this is the contract for SafeBuild, which is who Tom works for. Tom is our building inspector, who comes with the contract. And it's relatively the same as far as services go as the previous contract, except like you said, with the fees were changed and updated. And if you go to page nine, as requested service fee schedule is slightly different. And previously it was basically just the permit fee schedule. Now there are the plan review services, per hour fees, and those other structural engineering, plan review fees were added.
Questions? The hourly fee, is that just for like special circumstances or?
The plan review fee is for naked projects and new construction. That's passed through 100%. But then there is an hourly fee, which includes my time for projects beyond the building permits. So if you want me to do actual building official duties, working with code enforcement, working on zoning, then that would be at an hourly rate and that would all be agreed to by the administrator prior to us actually doing any work. I think in the old contract, it was at $45 an hour, which has changed a little bit pay-wise since 2003.
Other comments or questions? All right. Entertained a motion to approve a resolution.
A motion.
Is there a second? Second. Been moved by Trustee Morevka, seconded by Trustee Ham to authorize execution of a contract with SafeBuild Illinois LLC for certain services relating to building department activities. Morevka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Dr. March?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. Next on the item, the agenda, a couple fence variances. First one is for K Sergeant 824 Bonnie Lane.
Hello.
Hello.
Kim Sargent.
Eric Chompy. So at the end of the day, we've been approved for the rear section of our property's fence line to match seven foot with our neighbors. Currently?
Annual privacy.
Annual new privacy. However, it only goes up to the edge of our house, the 30-foot sidewalk.
So what we're looking to do is build in West Lot. And due to some of the suggestions that we have received, we did decide to change the building materials to be, I don't know if you have the picture, but it's going to be a metal fence with steel bricks. This is more sturdy and more fireproof. Let me take a seat. To that.
Yes.
So, I mean, you came before us a month or so ago and it was denied. So is it anything different with, so it's just the, this fence is a little different design than before? Is that what the main thing is?
Mainly, yes, the building materials. Also, the difference is the amount of variance that we're requesting has slightly changed. And again, that's mostly due to the location of the utilities. Trying to bring it in really closer to that side of the home would either hit the sewer or gas line. So it's a pretty dangerous.
So you want to come in from the sidewalk, how many feet?
Five and a half feet from the sidewalk minimum.
And what did we approve before?
Before, you didn't approve anything on the West Lot.
The variance was denied on the West Lot. They have a side yard setback.
All right, I guess what did we suggest? How far was? Did we have a number?
No, I think we just didn't agree on anything. There was no number that was agreed on. There was an idea that was tossed around, but it didn't seem as though it didn't pass anything. One of the main things that we want to talk about with this fence is the idea of safety and that was not really put under too much scrutiny last time. One of the biggest issues that we saw was that prior, there was a light pole that was hit on the corner of Meadow and?
It's the intersection of Meadow and Bonnie.
Meadow and Bonnie. That was hit and it was essentially taken down and replaced over the course of that week. Additionally, what's come to our attention is that the brick sign in front that says the Meadows?
No, it's actually that curved space you can see in that picture just behind the street signs.
That curved portion.
Yes, they had actually been hit twice and was recently replaced and pulled because of vehicle collision. So that, coming to our attention since the last time we were here, does solidify in our minds that it was more a question of when our home may be struck red that hit, especially with increases in traffic.
And the idea that this fence made with steel poles?
Rather than wood.
Rather than wood is more than likely going to prevent major damage to our home and more importantly, major damage to us. And based on research that we've done, it will prevent any loss of life in case the vehicle is out of control.
Is that a possibility to be impacted as well?
Any ideas that have been put forward to us and that we've seen otherwise as reasonable alternatives aren't so reasonable. The idea of planting shrubbery or planting trees within our property line will cause a lot of issue for any of the utilities. Any roots will actually more than likely damage all of that stuff. Additionally, by the time we can grow anything, a vehicle can just drive over it and it'll have absolutely no impact on stopping that vehicle.
Exactly. How far in are your gas lines and utilities from the sidewalk? The gas line is, I want to say it's about, it's like 15 and a half feet in from the sidewalk. Sewer line, you had actually two, so we're not 100% sure on that. One is within 10 feet of the house, the other is within 10 feet of the sidewalk. There may actually be two. Would this be like digging down into that? Is that why you guys wanted to stay away from that or? Yeah, we wanted to stay away from where there would be potential sewer lines, definitely and absolutely stay away from that gas line.
They can locate those things. You're talking a gas line, they can move it either way, so that really becomes irrelevant. And as far as your roots and your... And as far as your roots and your stuff bothering utilities and everything, we plant trees in the parkway everywhere, and everybody's got that. So those are.
Well, right, because in the parkway, utilities are located in the plat.
Correct.
They're located where?
So that's across the sidewalk.
In the actual yard.
They're located in our yard.
Right, the parkway is across the sidewalk.
Well, you can plant trees, that was something that you thought you couldn't, but correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. March, but they can plant trees in the parkway and use an approved tree.
Correct. By the time the tree gets to a substantial height or can't be big enough to stop a moving vehicle, it'd be way too late. Right now, we, it would take at the very least a few years. Currently, we have a tree in our backyard that's been planted by a previous owner about 20 years ago, and it's still.
It's just now about.
Now sort of buried.
That we're slowly.
But it won't stop there.
But yeah, no, we're not necessarily.
I don't think we can change our rules because you have a fear of road cars hitting your house. I mean, that being the case, we might have to do that all over town.
I agree.
Well, not necessarily, because not all of town is every property located at the intersection of a busy street and subdivision entrance. We are the only house in town that is.
I'm also into the pretense that your neighbors have got a seven-foot fence and you want a seven-foot fence to match it. But two wrongs don't make a right. Because then the next person could do a seven-foot, and then the next person could do a seven-foot.
I don't understand.
No, that's along the back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because along the back, everyone already has either a six or seven.
Yeah, it's the back.
Right, we're not even talking about the rear.
No, I know what you're talking about.
We don't want anything that tall on the west side, that is way too.
No, I'm not talking about the west side, I'm talking about on the backside.
Right.
I know we said, yeah, we could do that, but personally, I would rescind it because just because the neighbor has it doesn't mean that's the route to go.
Well, no, the neighbor does have seven foot plus an additional one foot left, so they do it in the east.
What's our ordinance call for in feet?
I believe it's six.
Six feet. So I mean, why would we?
So that's why we have actually changed ours to be six foot all the way around.
In the back also?
Yeah.
Being corrected.
So what are you requesting on this variance? You need one variance for a privacy on the west side?
Well, we need variance to build in the west side, and then a variance for actually privacy all the way around.
How, and how far from the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk, five and a half feet minimum.
From the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk.
And what does our rules call for, 30?
30.
Which would be the corner of the house.
Right.
Right. I would suggest we go from the corner of the house back to the back of the lot.
Which is what we already have. Right, I understand that. My main point of contention is that if the idea isn't to make, to make an exception or to.
To relieve hardship, then we're not allowed variance.
Well, that, but if the idea isn't to such standard, then my point of contention is why has the standard then been set on many, many, many houses within the meadows? Because many houses on our lots are well within three, maybe two feet, maybe one feet of the sidewalk. And we're not allowed to have one by the corner of our, you know, barely in the corner of our house. It makes no sense to me, but I'm not trying to argue that. It's just something I'm unsure of. Why certain homes have plastic legal implications to me that are not aesthetically pleasing within a quarter or two of the sidewalk, whereas we're trying to get something that structurally, structurally sound and stable, safe to us, and aesthetically pleasing to make sure that the entire neighborhood looks better and makes the neighborhood place better. As Mr. Rogers would say, what should be my favorite, I would like people to say, I want to be that person's neighbor. And I think you admit the house looked a lot better. Right, that's just.
I'm your neighbor, and I would disagree, a big fence along the side would not look better. I'm sorry.
Here's the entrance, I got a picture of the entrance of the subdivision. I don't know how well you can see it, but. Here's the.
Yeah, this will be, it'd be kind of like a rainbow there, big privacy fence. They have a fence coming off the side right there.
The hotel, is that one across the street? Is there one across the street?
Yeah, they, they have a chain link fence coming off to the side.
It's about, the fence is about five or six.
Yeah, we don't know.
But hopefully it wouldn't, they wouldn't have one right there.
I think it would look, not coming off the corner, would look kind of weird to the house across the street that does want off the corner of the house.
I understand what you're saying, but at the same token, if I wanted my house to look like the house across the street for us, I don't believe getting a chain link fence would.
Well, those are not allowed anyway, so.
Right, I understand. I understand. The train of thought is.
If they wanted to replace that fence, they could not replace a chain fence.
That all predates our. I agree with you, Ken. I mean, I don't think any way, shape, or form that could be described as an attractive addition to the home, to the community.
That's something that might be an issue, because the idea is whether or not it's aesthetically pleasing, but now the question is whose aesthetics are we pleasing? Again, not trying to put down arguments or anything, that's something that I'm confused about. Last time we came here, when the various variances was denied, I don't believe that it was in any way was denied, it was just in general denied.
I'm just trying to understand, at the end of the day, what's more important, our safety or what you're just like?
Well, you have a setback there, that's one reason for it to be denied. That it's all allowed there.
I understand, but I mean, the yards also have setbacks that variances have been granted. That's why the ordinance are there, but that's why variances are allowed in case by case basis.
We're not arguing their variances with you.
Right, and that's why we're trying to state, we're trying to state that in our situation, the issue is more along the lines of we're the only property that is on the line that is at the entrance of an intersection. I'm sorry, I'm. Entrance of a subdivision. She speaks a lot better than I do. Doesn't help that.
So what was the, what was the main reason that you guys went with this privacy fence versus one that had slats? Like to see?
Honestly, like, we would like more to be privacy, just so it's uniform across the fence, and especially abiding from the road, for sound. At the end of the day, we would be okay with a quarter inch slats. It is more of an issue that the fence, this fence we're looking at is pre-fabricated, so kind of getting those quarter inch spacing in there might be a bit difficult.
When you say that's the only entrance off of a busy road into a subdivision, how is that different than entering on Ratchee Road off of Wilmington Road?
It's actually the exit of that subdivision. There's no house at the entrance, there's like the nursing homes there, or whatever that medical place is.
No, 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 that's not, that's not Ratchee Road. That's.
Division.
Division. Ratchee Road is the next one down.
Oh, it's the one.
Is that the bank?
No, that's, that's.
Across the street.
Across the street.
Right, but that's not zoned our street.
I don't know if the zoning is, but it's not the only entrance into the subdivision. And they have a lot more traffic there than you would have, that long stretch.
Right, but that's not single family residence.
I think it's a duplex.
Yeah, and they have like an alleyway that goes behind for parking. This is like a totally different angle on there.
I don't understand the relevance of their, where they park.
I guess the idea is zoning is a big issue because you can't compare one property to another if they're zoned different. So we're the only one, the only property, as we described earlier, that's zoned.
R3. Right, that has to have one. That'd be the same as comparing as to your commercial business, essentially, if you're comparing between different zones.
Are there any further questions from the board?
How deep do these need to go down in to the ground?
36 inches. So the load is required.
Sure, you're an engineer with that staff, a 4,000 pound car. I'm not a fence engineer, but. I don't know. I don't know anything about that fence, honestly. I don't think I would.
Any other questions? Well, then I'll entertain a motion, one way or the other, to either grant or deny the variance.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? I'll second. It's been moved in second to deny the variance, moved by trustee Jones, seconded by trustee Hamm. Sorry. Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Hamm?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes, on this one.
Yes, to deny, correct? That's what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Dr. March?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thank you.
Out of curiosity, can I just ask what the point of denial was for this one, so we know going further? What reason why it was denied?
I just don't think that the board felt there was a hardship or a need to request, you know, to grant the variance.
So that's whether it's a hardship or is that anything? All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, J. Petrusak, I hope I got that right, 341 West Wood Street. Again, requesting a variance to install a five to six foot picket fence within three feet of the sidewalk.
Hi. I'm Jonathan Jason.
Hey.
We're looking to put a six foot privacy fence along the west side or east side of the property, up to three foot off the back property line, due to the telephone pole and the telephone green box together, run our property line directly right through that green box. And run three foot over to the sidewalk, for the sidewalk. Village ordinance is 30 feet off the sidewalk, which would put it halfway in the middle of our house. So we're hoping to have a decent area for our house. And the fence going along the street and the back would be a five foot picket fence. All in line.
I've got an aerial view of the property.
Their house is like right on the street practically.
Right, this is a little bit different situation where for some reason their setback is, their 30 foot setback is really literally right in the middle of their house, but there was some additions to this house.
I was gonna say, it's built long before.
I think Donna said her sister lived there or something, a long time ago.
Over babysitting there.
We drove over there. But, so here's the house right here, if you can see my arrow on it right there, that's the house. So the garage faces out onto, what is that, Conrad Avenue right there? And then Wood Street is this one right here, so there's Conrad. And then this is a driveway, there's the little driveway right here, so here's the side, here's the yard right here, part of the side yard.
Yeah, it's very, very small.
And then, so the setback comes way into the middle of the.
Yeah, it'd be like.
Structure. So that one's a little bit of a unique situation here. So where you see the, why you would see the, and I'm sorry, the trees, it's hard to see, but you can see on the plat why they're asking for that three foot variance or three feet off the sidewalk there.
27 foot variance.
Right. So, I mean, I drove over there and I looked, and I see where you kind of have your garbage cans kind of sitting there on that little brick patio. How would you measure that from? What would you measure that? Would you say this may be five feet in?
Yes.
I mean, I might suggest you come to that point, because, I mean, my only concern is that if you put up a privacy fence there.
No, that would be picket fence.
That would be picket, okay. And, but still, how many feet? High?
Five feet.
Five feet high. You've just got, you know, you're gonna be backing out cars here, and then the sidewalk's right here. I just wanted to point out that, you know, with people walking and you backing out here, if the board doesn't have any problems with, you know, any vision, if that doesn't impair vision of anybody there.
All my, all my vehicles, SUVs are really good. And I actually measured it, and I can only fit from the wall to the door, I mean, touching both of them is 18 feet. And from the corner beam of the fence to the street is 18 feet. So I would be able to back out, sit on my driveway, and be able to see both ways. But on the other hand, the issue, the reason I am asking for to go that far is several times, you know, I let them back out, and there's a crowd of kids coming down the street, and they were walking in line, standing next to each other, and they were right by the garage. And that's what I'm worried about, sitting down, or people walking their dogs right by, their dogs are out in the grass, I wouldn't be able to see the dog. Any, all the vehicles I have, I would, once you got to the garage door, you can see over time. A five foot, I actually put plywood up just to check. I have no problem seeing. My son's friend had a spider, which is a tiny problem. And again, I have small garage doors, so you can't fly out very fast. So backing out of that, I don't believe there would be an issue with seeing people coming down the sidewalk.
This would be in the front yard?
This would be in the backyard.
It's like a side. It's their backyard, but it's on the side of the street. There's a kind of a corner, kind of, right? Yeah.
In the backyard, you want to be in three feet because of that green phone box?
Yes, off the back, yes.
Because originally, we put that into place that it has to be on the property line, because what happens is people tend to throw junk over the fence, and that, once in my yard, it's three and a half feet, and if you put it on the property line, that doesn't become an option in the back. And if you come up to that green box, you know, just put an offset in fence. And I'm not saying you would do that, but next year, you may sell your house, and then the next guy, you know, they cut the grass, they dump it over there, they change the tires, they throw it over there. It becomes an issue for the people behind you looking at that. So that's the reason you want rear fences on the property line.
I mean, that's actually what you need to do, or that would be a variance also. So I talked to you on the phone, and I suggest you go to that property line and do a cutout.
I, I can do that. The only.
Get three more feet?
I, I don't know, I want all the feet I can get. But the only thing I'm looking at is I wouldn't know. I maintain the lawns, I have a lady behind me, a lady in front of me, and a gentleman next to me. I cut all four lawns. And I don't know how I would be back there to, I don't want to see have that growing up as weeds either. If I left three feet, I can run a, push one more back there, I could leave these back there, anything like that.
Does the person in the back of you have a fence?
No. She, she hasn't been home in five years. There is no other fence behind us currently. And if she was to put a fence back there, she would also have a variance, because I have the green box on my side, she has a telephone pole and the retaining wire on her I'm more than happy to put a cutout for, just.
I mean, why do you need a cutout? Can't they include that in their yard?
Yeah, they can, they can definitely include it in there. Yeah.
That takes us off the property.
That takes off, that puts us in her property.
So the box is right on the property.
It's right in the line.
I have pictures.
Utilities, they're silly.
It runs right down the center of that green box.
Do you have any suggestions for that?
Other than, sorry?
That's okay, you can stay there.
You talk loud enough.
I'm talking to the board. I'm talking to the board. The cutout is generally the, that's the only thing you can do. When they do come out the property line, that creates a big problem for us in the future because we also prohibit parallel fences. And if the neighbor wanted to put up a fence, they can't put it on their line because now they're parallel with this fence, we get to the three foot gap. So that's why we want them on the property line wherever possible. Again, I, I have no problem with putting a cutout, so.
Well, we'll just amend this drawing once we get to the point of issuing a new permit if.
And this is coming down the street.
So we won't issue you, you know, if the board's okay with it, we just won't give you a variance for that?
So the issue becomes how much of an issue, how much of a variance we can grant on the side? So how far is your house, the corner of your garage, from the property line? So you're asking for three feet, but what's the actual distance from your garage?
Eleven feet.
Eleven feet?
And that's to the sidewalk, right?
Yes.
I think it'd be safer off the corner of the house personally.
Or even five feet from the sidewalk in.
I was, somebody made a suggestion that possibly on that corner, we're worried about us seeing the sidewalk. If we can get a variance three feet off the sidewalk, like the last six feet, we bring it in on an angle. We need the catch post, so that we have another six feet of vision down the sidewalk.
See with angle.
That's a busy walking street for kids, isn't it?
Yes.
And I have to agree with Ken again, it's as important that they see you or anybody backing out as that you would see them. And if it's, comes off the corner of the house, the line of sight is, they can see it from a long ways off, whether riding on a bicycle or walking. And three feet, you happen not to see them, that's no time at all to react to that if they're on a bike or something.
How far is the brick, the brick part, when you have your garbage cans, how far off is that from the house? But I mean, it doesn't come straight off the corner, it comes.
Yes, that's where we're, we're gonna put the gate, and that's where we would angle it out is where we could do that.
Is the whole purpose of this so you have more room for your dogs?
Pretty much, we don't have anything.
I'll be honest with you, we don't have any with London Bronch.
Sure.
To be honest.
It's not really a hardship or a.
We would put picket fence all the way around, but our neighbor has small dogs and our dogs like to be out at three in the morning, so they bark and wake her up. So that's why we're putting a privacy fence on that side.
I mean, I think, you know, for aesthetics, you know, this is an odd situation and, you know, we. Because the house extends past that 30 foot thing, I'm willing to give a variance, but really, I, my opinion is just to do it to the edge of the house, so. Because I, I just. I just don't like the idea of extending it closer to the sidewalk. I mean, safety's one thing, but I think the aesthetics too. So I don't, this is my opinion.
If you guys agree to pull it off the back of the house, I'm in, I'd agree with that.
Me too.
So. Is there a motion then to grant a variance of 11 feet? Actually, the variance of 19 feet from the 30 foot setback?
And that's to the back of the house?
Yeah, the corner, the corner of the house.
Whatever the corner is.
Pardon the motion?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. They're moved and seconded to grant a 19 foot variance from the, from our 30 foot setback. Moved by Trustee Jones, seconded by Trustee Mirevka.
Sorry, catching up on notes?
And a privacy on the.
Is that, is that a part of the variance, having a privacy fence?
And then we're going all the way back to the property line, correct?
I change that.
So Mike, is that okay with your motion, have a privacy fence on that side on the north, east side of the property?
Nothing on the back, back's good?
Back's good.
Okay. Who motioned it, I'm sorry?
Trustee Jones.
Trustee Mirevka, second.
Okay. Motion for 19 foot variance, which is the same as coming off the corner of the house and a privacy fence to the east, that's what's been motioned, right? Got it. All right, Jones?
Yes.
Mirevka?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Dr. March?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Last item is executive session, discuss the appointment, appointment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of a public body. So I need a motion to go into executive session. Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Parker, seconded by Trustee Ham.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Mirevka?
Yes.
Dr. March?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
And I don't, there will not be any action taken after this. There could be?
Mm-hmm.
Oh?
That's action item.
Okay, I take that back then.
Maybe. Want to just stay in here since somebody's here?
I'd prefer.
As long as the camera is off.
I was gonna use the ADA entrance, I guess.